I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of November 4th, 2014, to order. Would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco. Hart.
Here.
Potchikas.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
And item number one.
Employee recognition service award pins.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, as you know, each month we like to recognize employees who've achieved certain milestones of employment with the city. And today I'd like to recognize 10 employees with over 210 years of service, and two of them are here in person to receive their pins. But first, with 10 years, Kristi Lanning, Human Resources Analyst II in the Administrative Services Department. With 15 years of service, Sam Blackwell, Building Inspector with the Community Development Department. Brian Gronnbeck, Senior Building Inspector, Community Development Department. Darrell Schoen, Laboratory Analyst II in the Public Works Department. With 20 years of service, John Gordon, Senior Streets Maintenance Worker in the Public Works Department. With 25 years of service, David Hedges, Police Officer with the Police Department. And Captain Dave Widem with the Police Captain with the Police Department, he will be here in person. With 30 years of service, John Crota, Airport Patrol Officer II with the Airport Department. And the two people who are here in person is Captain Widem, as I said, with 25 years of service, and also Jerry Morozowski, who's an Accounting Assistant with the Finance Department. We recognized her last month, but she's here this month with 30 years of service, and she's here today to accept her letter of recognition.
We'll go in 25 years first, and then the big 3-0, so Captain Widem, come on up. There you go.
David Widem began his career as a police officer with the Santa Barbara Police Department in 1989 after serving in the United States Army as a military policeman. In 1992, Dave completed instruction in the operation of police motorcycle and served as a traffic officer for the following nine years. During that time, he was assigned as the Traffic Investigator, where he became an expert in the field of accident reconstruction, responding to and investigating the city's major traffic collisions for the majority of the decade of the 1990s. In 2001, Dave was promoted to Sergeant, where he served in the Patrol Division, Administrative Services, and as a Detective Sergeant overseeing the investigation of high-tech and white-collar crimes. It was during this time that Dave attained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and graduated from the Sherman Block Supervisory Leadership Institute Class 189. In 2007, Dave was promoted to Lieutenant. He served as Patrol Watch Commander until December 2008, when he was assigned as the Assistant Division Commander for Administrative Services. There, he managed training and recruitment, special events, animal control, and due to the recession taking place during that time, was assigned the collateral duty as the department's records manager. In 2011, Dave transferred to and managed the Combined Communications Center, where the city's fire, police, and EMS calls are received and dispatched to emergency field units. In May 2012, he was promoted to his current rank of Captain, taking command of the largest division of the department, Patrol Operations. Dave lives with his wife in Orchid and has been married to his wife Katie for nearly 27 years. He has two children, Steven and Lauren, and credits his success, especially as a police officer, to the love and support from his family and his God's living grace. Dave, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm going to bring to attention, 15 years ago, Captain Ed Osted, who was a longtime police officer with our department, was up here standing exactly where I am, getting his 25-year service pin. And there's something he said I'm going to echo now, is after 25 years of service, he wondered where the time went. Because it's such an honorable job, and it's such an honor to serve this city that I feel the same way. Where did the time go in the past 25 years? Because it's a great place to work, and it's been a lot of fun all these years. As you'll notice out in the audience, typically, there are a lot of my comrades that will come here to support me, and there aren't a lot. And the reason I don't think it's for me is I'm wearing a black band over my badge today, because the last couple of weeks has been very difficult in law enforcement. There have been quite a few deputies and officers that have lost their lives in the line of duty, and that was no exception last week, when a Ventura County Sheriff's Deputy lost his life in a traffic collision. And that's where the majority of those who would be here are at his funeral today. That was at 1:00 today. So it's been a tough week for law enforcement, and I salute my comrades in arms. One of the things that I do credit for my success, as I said, is my family. They're here today, and I just want to thank them for their love and support over the past 25 years. So for allowing me to serve the city, for the mayor, council, Paul, and Ariel, thank you so much for allowing me to do that. I certainly enjoy my job, and I'm going to continue to serve the citizens of Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have Jerry Morozowski. There you are. Welcome.
Jerry Morozowski started her career with the city of Santa Barbara in October 1984 as an Office Specialist for the Santa Barbara Police Department. She was promoted to the Finance Department, where she worked in payroll as an Office Specialist III, and later in the city Billing and Customer Service Office as an Accounting Assistant. Jerry has worked closely with many internal departments and city residents to prepare monthly bills for city services. She's an extremely dedicated, dependable, and hard-working employee who takes pride in her work. She's well-liked, and often employees and residents will stop by to say hello to her when they are at City Hall. She's always willing to offer her help, knowledge, and advice, and she's been the recipient of the department's SWIFT Award for her hard work in billing and customer service. Jerry's the proud mother to four children, Martin Jr., Helen, Jennifer, and Emma, and has five grandchildren. When not at work, Jerry loves watching her favorite college football team, the University of Alabama. Many times throughout the football season, you can hear phrases "Roll Tide" and "Crimson Tide" as you pass her desk. Jerry, I'm very pleased to recognize your 30 years of service, as well as your many personal and professional accomplishments. And on behalf of the Santa Barbara City Council and your fellow citizens, thank you and congratulations on this admirable achievement. Thank you so much for your service.
Madam Mayor, Council, I don't have a whole lot to say, but thank you for the recognition. It's been a challenge and a lot of fun along the ride. And I only have a few weeks left before I retire, so I'm glad I was able to get my pin before I leave. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, public comment, we'll start with Kenneth Locke, and we'll continue with Clint Orr, and Kenneth, I called your name first, so come on up. I know you were outside. That's all right. Go right ahead.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I want to talk to you today about the whole concept of interdisciplinary education and the interdisciplinary perspective. I spoke to you last week about becoming intelligent through the means of athletics and understanding like the mind-body integration. When it comes to interdisciplinary education in that perspective, we all are relatively artists, scientists, and athletes in all disciplines. And we all develop, we, so right now, we've been subjected to an educational system which is not interdisciplinary, it's specialized. And what it's done is it's kind of divided us and categorized us into, say, one particular art form, one particular, say, athletic discipline. And it really hasn't provided us with the means for actually bringing this community and integrating this community, because it has divided us. Right now, when you have the arts, you have music, dance, performing arts, but again, right now, they're not interrelated, they're divided. And they're all, their efforts are all divided, they're not integrated. When it comes to athletics department, you have volleyball, tennis, baseball, football. But again, and then what's happening is that the children are specializing themselves in one discipline, and they're not getting kind of the opportunity to really fully develop themselves as an athlete and as well as as an artist. It's just specialized, it's just kind of an inferior way of educating, it turns out. Just wanted to bring that up today. Thank you.
Mayor Schneider, councilmembers, Amazon Studios, hey, if anybody's watching, and those watching on video at home. I'm Clint Orr, and I'm here to let everybody know that I just sold the rights to How to Dance with California Cowgirls television program to Amazon Studios. I mean, it hasn't, I mean, it's going to be another 40 days until I see if a check clears or not, but the pilot is called Airport Honky Tonk. So the whole gist of the show is that we'll be searching for underperforming properties and structures at airports throughout the state of California. It's kind of like Heelhouser, except for I don't say "golly," and I'm straight. But other than that, we'll be searching around, particularly, the next place we're looking at is Ventura, over at the Amario Airport. Get that? It's Camrio, I knew that. So, and also we're going to look at Ontario and at John Wayne. So we'll see which one starts up. You know, if there's not, you know, the interest here, then we'll open up the Airport Honky Tonks and other locations. I would hope that there would be. I think it's a good idea, and everybody else does, but this council and the airport authority couldn't hurt airport landings and couldn't hurt our kids. So off we go. Talk to you soon. Thanks.
Phil Walker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. You know, I'd like to give a thanks to the City Parks and Recreation Department, Street Tree Division. We had a wonderful rain late Friday night, 9:00 to 10:30, thereabouts. Over where I live, Quinientos, 10, 1100 blocks, it brought a lot of palm fronds down. And I called Patty at the Street Tree Division, 3:30 yesterday, and when I got up today, it was beautiful, everything, and there was a substantial loading on those two blocks of palm fronds, and very, very efficient. Looks nice, so thank you much. The D-Sal plant and divisiveness here in the California section, LA Times today, they're going over the conundrum and cambria, and they need the water badly. And I sense some of that going on today with the city D-Sal plant. I had occasion to speak to First District Supervisor Salud Carvahall a couple weeks ago on a radio program, and I've lived on the east side for 40 years. My stepson works throughout Montecito. I have numerous neighbors that live on the east side that work in Montecito, and it's in everybody's best interest to keep Montecito green and prosperous. So, you know, if Charles Myers were here today, I'm sure he'd want to see that plant running up to full capacity if the needs be. And, you know, the grant funds that come this way, the revolving grant fund, they're put together on a regional basis throughout the whole state, correct? So thank you.
Okay. That concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar, and there's some items to read.
Item number three, adoption of ordinance to amend Municipal Code Section 4.52.160 pertaining to certain water-related public works contracts. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance to the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the municipal code by amending Section 4.52.160 pertaining to public works contracts. Item number four, adoption of ordinance approving grant agreements for storm water infiltration projects and the Clean Water State Revolving Fund financing agreements. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance to the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and ratifying the grant agreements and the Clean Water State Revolving Fund financing agreements between the City of Santa Barbara and the State Water Resources Control Board that were authorized by City Council Resolution Numbers 07033, 07043, 12088, 14056, 14057, 09013, and 090 as amended by Resolution Number 10089. Item number five, resolution naming a private way as Meadows Lane. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara acknowledging the non-public status of the private way located adjacent to Los Vasitas Road within the city limits and naming it Meadows Lane. And item number six, safe drinking water state revolving fund loan application for the reactivation of the Charles E. Meyer desalination plant that council adopt by reading a title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara designating the acting city administrator to execute and deliver an application to the State Water Resources Control Board for a safe drinking water state revolving fund loan for the reactivation of the Charles E. Meyer desalination plant.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Is there any need to take an item off, or is there a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'm seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We move on to item eight.
Status report and contract services for the Cabrillo Pavilion and Bath House renovation project.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Zachary.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Jill Zachary, Parks and Recreation Department, with today's report, we'd like to give you a status of the work effort on the project for the last, oh gosh, probably 10, 11 months, and then ask your authorization for some additional technical studies. As we all know, the Cabrillo Pavilion was constructed in 1926 and given to the city by David Gray. Since then, and as a result of that, East Beach area has developed for public park purposes over the decades, and this essentially was one way to anchor this section of Santa Barbara and move forward. And it's been documented and planned for decades and continues to serve that purpose today. With today's report, we'd like to review with you the schematic design, provide you with some information on the review by the Historic Landmarks Commission, give you a sense of where we'll be going and where we've been with community outreach, coastal hazards, sea level rise issues, and then, as I mentioned initially, the additional technical studies that we need to complete in order to submit our development application for the project. So just a brief review, the scope of the project is maintain the historical integrity of the building, at the same time, address its building systems, which are very much in need of repair, and look at structural, seismic, and importantly, access issues to the building. Renovating the interior, increasing site safety, enhancing programming and community use, and then also achieving LEED Silver Standard for the building. When we reinitiated project design, one of the things we did is look back in time to sort of inform both how it's been used by the community over the years and how it's been altered over the years to meet community needs. And just want to review very quickly with you a few slides that show essentially how the Pavilion Bath House looked soon after it was first constructed. As you can see, there were many people on the beach enjoying the beach. We also had a former wading pool, which is where the new playground will be going in fairly shortly. And then, and then the pergola, stoa area right here, which served as a covered area for people to either enjoy the wading pool and today watch their children on the playground. Similarly, the interior, it's been a community center since its inception, whether it was for teas, for dances, for gaming. It served servicemen in the 1940s. In fact, it actually housed them for a period of time. There's record of the number of cots that were in the pavilion floor of the building. Early on, the café area, the sort of dining portion of the facility was on the second floor, what we call the second floor, and there was a snack bar on the first floor. Now, we know, as we know it today, we have a restaurant concession on the first floor and a sort of a kitchen-type function on the second floor. We reviewed extensively the exterior alterations that have occurred to the building over time. Most significantly, the enclosure of the second-floor terrace, as you can see, is it looked in the early '40s, so it's been there for a long time as well. And then in the '80s, when the city made its first attempts to try to make it more accessible, and that's one of the key issues that we have to face today. We also looked at the interior, and the photos on the top show you essentially how it looked in sort of the '30s and the '40s. So there was a wooden dance floor that had a metal railing around it. The lobby was the tea room, and this essentially is today's lobby, which is more like our conference room. And it gives you a sense of the openness of the downstairs. This is the bathhouse portion where there was gaming areas as well. And then over time, I believe this photograph is probably from the '70s, before we did the 1980s interior remodel. So we've tried to track over time how the building has changed and why it has changed. And essentially, what we found as we've done that is it's always served a community purpose. It's either social, recreation, beach, bathing, that type of thing. So what we're proposing is essentially to continue that, but to enhance it. At the same time, deal with today's challenges. It doesn't take much to go by the bathhouse and the pavilion to sort of see some of the ways we struggle with the structure today and how much it needs both an exterior and interior facelift. So taking that into consideration and looking ahead, our design objectives are to enhance site access and safety, expand public use areas, you'll see when we show you the schematic interior plans, integrate the first and second floor. The building currently operates essentially as two facilities, but looking at ways that we can enhance the building so it operates when it can as one facility access between the two. Provide for the existing recreation programs that we currently have there. It's popular for summer programs, sports programs, that's something we would certainly continue. Upgrading our ability for catering services at the pavilion floor. We have a restaurant concession space on the first floor, improving that, reorienting it in a way so that it better serves as a concession space and also serves the public. And then enhancing beach access. So this is our site plan, and I'm going to put my glasses on. I'll give you a quick tour. Essentially, the building footprint remains the same. There's no change to the footprint. If you imagine yourself on the promenade level, so this is the beach level in the south elevation, this is essentially where it is today, and it's actually the alignment of old East Boulevard. So before Cabrillo Boulevard was constructed and the roadway passed in front of the building, the East Cabrillo Boulevard was completed soon after the building was complete. So essentially maintaining the same footprint. You'll see along here, this is the low seat wall that we currently have. We would have a similar seat wall. The promenade itself would be 16 feet wide. This is the area that we call the portico, so that's the covered porch on the first floor. We'd actually extend it out to what the original plans show as the original alignment of the portico. It was never constructed that way. So the portico itself would extend out. What that would allow us to do is meet the accessibility needs, to get individuals from the promenade up onto the portico and negate the need, we wouldn't have stairs, it would be a slight ramp up. We would do that on the east and west side of the building. So the footprint stays the same, the promenade gets a little narrower. Similarly, this is the west parking lot. Our accessibility stalls to meet today's standards would be over here, and entry into the promenade would be the same. And as we have today, we have a sidewalk and a ramp up, but the ramp would be redone to meet today's accessibility standards. Once individuals arrived on the sidewalk in front of the building, they would continue around to a ramp and enter the building in this way. I'll show you briefly, it's a little difficult to see on the slide, but what we're also proposing to do is expand the front entry terrace. As you can imagine, when you walk up to the building, you walk up to the stairs and you immediately go in. There's no place to sort of rest, so it would, the terrace, let's see, I lost the mouse, there we go, would be expanded, and it would enhance the presence of the building on Cabrillo Boulevard. On the east side, here's where the former wading pool was and where the replacement playground, I'm happy to report, should begin in the next 30 to 45 days. This is what is called technically the stoa in its historic structure designation, but it's commonly referred to as a pergola. We would open this area up, and right now, you can see sort of the dotted line where the current structure is. These were improvements that were made in the early '80s to provide more visibility between individuals perhaps sitting or enjoying the promenade here to their children playing in the playground, and then also sitting areas for families that would enjoy the playground. We would restore the east entrance to the building on this location, and then we'd also construct a service entrance to the first floor to allow access into the concession space, access into the building, and then, as you'll see in the next slide, access to an interior elevator. Very quickly, this actually shows a beach boardwalk, which is new, which would be an addition. We're modeling on what they have down in Santa Monica and is becoming increasingly popular in beach locations to increase access to the beach. The first-floor bathhouse, essentially, we're proposing to keep pretty much all the same functions, but enhance what we have. Shower locker facilities would move to the west side of the building with the men's and women's locker rooms and shower facilities. They would be smaller than what we have today. We'd have family changing areas. The actual staff reception desk, entry-exit point from the shower locker facilities would be in this location. The purple color actually shows the staff offices, and then this sort of lighter lavender in this room, this room, and this room are multipurpose rooms. Right now, we have staff offices in this location, and then behind it is our, I'm not sure if it's '50s or '60s gym, antiquated gym, which was the original site of the laundry where they washed the woolen swimsuits when people came to the bathhouse early on. So we have the ability to program the building for multipurposes, whether it's recreation, whether it's social, and essentially expands the opportunity for the public to use the building, much more so than they are able to today. This is the original footprint of the lobby, so we would be restoring the original lobby. We are showing in yellow here the restaurant concession space, which is slightly larger than what we have today. The proposal is to reorient it so the dining area would be in this location, so one could eat inside at the bathhouse pavilion on a perhaps less advantageous weather day and look out at the ocean. And then in this location, we're proposing potential for additional tenant space. Again, these are conceptual. This would be a hallway, back to this room would be another multipurpose room, and then this pink area would be storage, sports facilities for our staff programs, our sports programs, recreation activities. The elevator is located, if I'm going to get this correct, right in this location, and it would go up to the first floor. Exterior restrooms would remain the same. Pretty much everything that you see today on the exterior would look very similar, just much upgraded. The pavilion floor I mentioned earlier, when we looked back at the old photographs and realized that the tea room, and we actually, I would also like to add, we have the original set of plans, we have a full set, which we were luckily guided to by someone and found at the UCSB Davidson Library. This was, this room was called the tea room, so we would open it up, right, you can see these dotted lines right here. That's where the conference room currently is, and this is where we currently have two staff offices, so we would open that up for public use. Our main events room would remain essentially the same, it would get an upgrade. The yellow area shows where we'd actually have a warming kitchen that met catering standards, so a caterer could come in and actually use the kitchen in a way that they currently can't use. Renovation of the interior restrooms, and then this is the area of the terrace that's enclosed. We are proposing to renovate the enclosure. It actually would be reduced in size slightly, and I'll show you with the south elevation what that means, in order to maintain the type of facility use and programming that we currently have. And then also in recognition that as wonderful as East Beach is, the weather is often makes it very difficult to be outside if you're at an interior function. If you look at photos over time, they were always trying to cover the terrace with something so that more people could be outside, even though it was windy, or it was foggy, or it was too sunny. So this is the, looking at the front of the building, essentially, it would look much like it does today, just improved. The staircase right here would be wider. I mentioned there would be a terrace, a larger terrace. Access via ramp would be in this location, plus we'd also maintain the existing service ramp that's there today, if you noticed that, on the left side of the building as you're facing it. This gives you a sense of landscaping and I won't go into much detail, because this sort of looks very stark. Part of the plan is to redo and renovate all of the landscaping around the building. The south elevation, so the beach side of the facility, this gives you a sense of the concept study, and this shows you the terrace area, and what we're proposing to do is actually bring it in and restore original windows that were covered over when the terrace was enclosed. that were covered over when the terrace was enclosed. So, we'd be returning the original windows to the south side of the building and renovating the terrace. Essentially, as you can see, much of the building would look as it does today. Many of the doors would get either restored or in some cases, they would turn into glass, like for example in these locations where they're currently in wood, because this would provide light into the interior of the building so people could see the type of activity that was going on in there. Right now, you might look and wonder what happens there. It looks very dark. It doesn't look very inviting. And one of our goals is to make it very inviting, to make it a destination. This rendering gives you a sense of how it might be in the future and how the promenade would be used, how the portico area would be used, and then the presence of an indoor area on the second floor terrace. I mentioned we have reviewed the project with the Historic Landmarks Commission. We've been to four concept hearings. In addition to accepting the Historic Structures Report, we've reviewed with the commission exterior site access, including the promenade ramps and walkways, the exterior building renovations, including the entryways, the doors, the windows, and the terrace enclosure. Also, the renovation of the pergola or the stoa. And then landscaping, lighting, and decorative metal. We received at our last HLC concept review positive comments and initial compatibility findings. So, we'll be moving forward with continuing with design work to be able to submit our development application and returning to landmarks when we go in for preliminary concept review. So, we've achieved a fairly good milestone in terms of positive comments on the project. Community outreach, early on, we had a series of focus groups in 2011. More recently, we held a community open house at the pavilion. We had over 100 people attend. We've produced a project fact sheet. It's on our webpage. It's also available. And then I have a fairly healthy email list to notify interested parties, including today's meeting, that the project would be presented to council for information. We intend to have future public community meetings, status reports, and then, as we've mentioned in the past, we anticipate that there will be some project fundraising that's needed to move this project forward. Just to recap, when we look back in history and we look back to our focus groups and also checking in with people today, what we continue to hear is do what you do now but do it a lot better and do more of it so I can come here and be here for longer periods of time. I can bring my family. I can feel safe. I can enjoy the beach. I can engage in recreation activities. One of the key questions we're in the process of answering is to what extent do we need to take into consideration coastal hazards, sea level rise? It's something that's required as part of our coastal development permit. We have engineering, a preliminary report that's evaluated the vulnerability of the site and come up with some preliminary adaptation strategies, which we are required to do. Not surprisingly, the models show that the building is sensitive to flooding. In fact, all of Santa Barbara's coastline is like that, so that's not much of a surprise. More so than there being a sort of immediate concern for sea level rise. That will be a factor much out into the future. Looking at how the city manages its beach and harbor today, today's harbor dredge program is key to the nourishment of the beach in front of East Beach and clearly a factor as we move forward with this project. The requirement to continue nourishing the beach with harbor sediment. And then also look at ways to enhance that nourishment where there's additional sand sources. In some of our research, we also determined that back in the 30s, an extensive amount of shoreline protection was placed along the Santa Barbara coastline. And without going into it in detail, this is an aerial of the building and the former Miramar Monte Hotel, now the Hyatt, wrong location, in about probably 1932. So, the building went in, Cabrillo Boulevard, and then the hotel were built. And as you can see, the ocean is quite close, and there are some sort of structures that exist along the length of the building and the parking lots and actually going all the way around Palm Park and near Laguna Channel. So, the extent to which these shoreline protections are still there, and we anticipate that they are still there based on how they were constructed and what they were constructed with, they're just buried in sand from beach nourishment, that they would play a factor in protecting Santa Barbara's coastline into the future. At the same time, you know, we can't hang our hat on that entirely. One of the things we're moving forward with before the end of this year is starting a beach profile monitoring program where we're more closely monitoring the change in the beach profile over the seasons and as a result of storm events because it does move and change. If council members remember, the second to last rain we had in March, March 1st, we lost an extraordinary amount of beach because we also had a high wave event. And that actually revealed some of these old structures and allowed us to realize we might go back into history and see what actually might be there. We just haven't seen for a very long time because it's been covered in sand. So, monitoring the changes in the beach profile and using that as a methodology to trigger what type of solutions or adaptations we might employ with a focus on soft solutions, things that are temporary that would really address more of the coastal hazards, coastal storm issues as a need. And we'll have more information as we move forward with that. So, today, we're also asking that council successor agency authorize two technical contracts. A third one will be on your agenda next Tuesday, but they're for archaeology, phase one investigation, biological resources, and geotechnical analyses, essentially reports that we need to have when we submit our development application. So, how the project could potentially affect any archaeological resources, construction of the project, similarly, any biological resources, and then getting a better understanding of our seismic liquefaction issues, stormwater infiltration needs, and then how the building might respond to coastal hazards and sea level rise. So, our next step is to complete those technical studies. We anticipate submitting our development application in January. We will be sitting down with the California Coastal Commission and staff and talking about how we're looking at approaching coastal hazards and sea level rise. We will be coming back to secure a lead commissioning agent since our goal is silver lead on the building. And then, as I mentioned earlier, moving forward with community fundraising, working on a business plan. We initiated that a number of years ago, but starting to work on it again next year so that when the building is open and functioning, we have the plan for operations, maintenance, revenue, programming, that kind of thing. And then one of the questions that often comes up is the restaurant concession. We have an in-place agreement with East Beach Grill, and that still stands. At some point, we will be looking at doing an RFP for a new concession in the future. And any other services that we determine would be appropriate to contract out for the building. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you. We do have a public comment speaker slip. Why don't we do that first? Joe Howell, come on up.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Joe Howell, local attorney. I'm here on behalf of Francisco Aguilera, who's the owner-operator of East Beach Grill. As you know, from being there, dining there, I'm sure, and the diagrams, East Beach Grill is located at the east end of the facility facing East Beach. Two or three months ago, right before we appeared at the first Historic Landmarks Commission meeting, wanted to get some background from Francisco, and I said, I have a couple questions. Number one, when did East Beach Grill open? And number two, when did you start working there? And Francisco, being very direct, said March 24th, 1984. I said, he said for both. So, the story is, on the first day it opened, March 24th, 1984, he started his job as a part-time dishwasher. It did not last long. He was only there two days. The owner, John Williams, said, "I can't have you washing dishes," promoted him to work on the food line. So, fast forward 24 years, April of 2008, Francisco very proudly became the owner of a company, John K. Williams, Inc., that owns and operates each Beach Grill as well as on Sternsworth, Char West, and Great Pacific Ice Cream. So, Francisco and I are here today for a couple reasons. First, to introduce the two of us and really to emphasize how supportive Francisco is of the renovation. He's very eager to work, to plan with city staff, with architects, to make the facility the best it can be. Also, want to mention, I see him here today, Nancy Rapp, Jill who gave the presentation, Rich Hannah. Very early in the process, the three of them invited Francisco and me to sit down with them. It was great. They went over a lot of preliminary information, and they really been open and informative, kept us up to date, which I think has been very, very helpful. Finally, I asked Francisco, so what's the message today? And in his words, he wants people to know he's totally committed in a personal way and in a financial way to continuing East Beach Grill to maximize the renovated restaurant space. He wants to serve the community at large, tourists, locals, wants to serve his very loyal customers, couple of whom are here, legions of whom showed up at the community open house, and he looks forward to many more years at the East Beach Grill location. Thank you.
You have awesome orange blueberry pancakes. So, thank you for those. I know they rival someone else. Yeah, sorry. Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of public comment to the council. I have a question just to start off. If you can go to, I think it's slide 11, it's the site plan? Yeah. So, you were talking about the ADA accessibility route and the parking and all of that. Did this go to the access advisory committee?
Madam Mayor, it hasn't gone to them yet. It will once we submit our actual development application.
Okay. The reason why I asked is it seems like a very long roundabout path to get from an accessible car parking space into the building. You're going all the way from one end, all the way to the other, and then back to the middle. And I don't know where the accessibility parking would be on the other side of the other lot. And I guess the other question would be the elevator, which is on the east side, if that can serve as accessible movement as well. But I did notice that, and if we're starting, you know, I know we have a certain footprint, but that just seemed to me to seem a bit excessive for someone in a wheelchair or with a stroller or whatever to get from point A inside the building. It's pretty roundabout. So, it was just a thought. So, I didn't know if they had looked at that, and I know you have, you know, structural constraints, but does the elevator go to all levels then? Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I could just, we have looked at the issue of distance, and perhaps I'd do a little bit more information. The accessible parking spaces for the west side would be over here, and you can see that this arrow here shows the access. So, current accessibility standards require someone to be able to pass in front of a vehicle. So, to bring the existing site spaces up to code, they would pass in front of the vehicle. And I've lost the mouse again. There we go. And correct, when you were going up to the building from the west parking lot, you would take this sidewalk as you currently do and this ramp, and then come around and go in on this side. You could also be on the sidewalk and come in. On the, on the, sorry, on the east side, the accessible parking area is here, and the path of travel begins right in front of these vehicles. There would be an opportunity to take this service entrance and enter in here to get into the elevator, to go up to the second floor. The elevator would go back and forth between the two floors. As well as from both parking lots, you could come in, go in through the front of the building to the elevator and go up, or come in to this area, go in and go to the elevator and come up. So, we've tried to design it in a way that there are multiple ways to get into the building that provide alternative access. I would also point out that this line right here is a high-pressure gas line. And one of the challenges that we have with the project is avoiding that for project construction. So, in looking at the design and site access and trying to come up with the meeting accessibility standards while also providing the service entrance, we're dealing with a limited amount of space. So, that's the direction that we've gone in to try to meet all of those needs.
Yeah. Well, bringing up the other ways to get into the building from the ground floor makes a lot of sense, so that helps. And then the other question is, it's not the building itself, but it's on East Carrillo, Cabrillo, excuse me, East Cabrillo Boulevard. The sidewalk kind of ends abruptly before the streetlight. Is that part of the plan to put back a sidewalk or is that not part of this plan? Or can you elaborate on that?
Madam Mayor, we have observed that as well, and it's currently not part of the project. Through our initial project review team review, it's not something that was raised. It might be raised in the future. If there was a sidewalk here, some of the issues that would need to be addressed is grade and site and being above the parking lot. This is our trash enclosure that will have to be enlarged slightly. We're anticipating that as we go into development review. That would be a question that would be further answered, whether it's required as part of this project.
Would be good to look at it, if not part of this project, but, or it might be a separate but parallel project because it is an awkward area.
I was going to tell you that also, right in front on Cabrillo Boulevard, there are three or four blue parking spaces. So, you don't have to be just in those parking lots. It makes it a lot easier if you're.
Yeah, right on Cabrillo Boulevard. I agree with you. Yeah, no, getting in from the ground floor up and incorporating the two floors because right now it's very segregated, or at least it feels that way. That helps. Okay, well, that was good. I'm glad the access advisory committee is going to look at it because that's the main reason why we're upgrading the facility is to go up, get up to ADA code. So, okay, thank you. Mr. White.
Thank you. The technical studies, you were saying that those technical studies, you're going forward with those now, proposing to go forward with those now, and you're proposing to submit for a coastal development permit in January? That's considering holidays coming up. Is that a, do you have a, is that a realistic timeline?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, it's a little ambitious whether we submit right at the beginning of January, but we do have project schedules worked out with our archaeology and biology and geotech services contractors. They know that our goal is to do that. And I would add that KBZ Architects has a whole series of subconsultants that are working on a myriad of other issues that are gearing up towards the middle of the development application. These are kind of the last pieces of the pie. It's our intent to try to do that in January so that we can keep the project moving forward.
So, we're not doing RFPs for technical studies? We have already, the consultants have already been chosen. These are just, so we're moving forward with that?
That's correct. We have the contracts in place. With council successor agencies' approval, we have them in place.
Yeah. And then, so then coastal development permit would be, how long, how long in the application process? And then give us, again, understanding that these will change, but just we start with the timeline estimate. So, can you give us a little more specifics on that?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, well, when we submit our application, it'll go through the city's initial 30-day review process. So, we anticipate that staff will come back and ask us to do a little bit more work before they deem the application complete and initiate environmental review and planning commission review. The project is in, and not in the original jurisdiction, so we only get a local coastal development permit for this project. However, we are going to be consulting with coastal commission staff because it's a coastal property that's getting developed, and they have a keen interest in what happens. Perhaps it would take 90 days before we have a project that's deemed complete, and then that would initiate based on anything else that's going on in the city from a development standpoint, when it might be seen by the planning commission. So, it could be another six months until we receive clear idea about where we are with the project. Between submitting the application.
Submitting the application to the city, and then it starts grinding its way through, and you're estimating that six months would be a ballpark figure and could be longer.
Yes, considering that there's usually anywhere between 60 and 90 days before an application's deemed complete by staff and willing to move it forward to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. And then, secondly, the finances of it, we have, we've budgeted. And then, secondly, the finances of it, we have, we've budgeted, we have $11 million budgeted, something like that now, 10, 10 to 11?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, now, just over $9 million budgeted for the project. And we're still working on determining what the actual construction costs are. We anticipate we could be looking at fundraising on the order of about $3 million in addition to that, taking into consideration all of the costs to design and engineer the project, complete the permitting process, move through with construction, address the fact that facility will be closed, will need to be closed for the upgrades to occur, and then reopening it and moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I love that we're considering the original architecture as a target, because I think that's fabulous. Brought up a question though, because when this was built all those years ago, before local coastal development permits and whatnot, if we enclose spaces, even though they were formerly designed, maybe not even used, but if we enclose spaces, it's my understanding a lot of times when you do that on the coast, you're intensifying the use of a property, and you trigger other issues in terms of parking capacity and whatnot. Now, clearly, there's generous parking and waterfront parking on either side, but is that part of a concern? Has that been something that, or is that something you don't find out until you go in and submit?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, we anticipate, because we're intending to use the building essentially as it was originally intended, the interior square footage is actually going to decrease, because the terrace, enclosed terrace, is actually going to reduce that, that area by just over 35%. It is a recreation activity, which is primary consideration of use of the coastal zone. We have ample parking on either side. We don't anticipate that the intensification of use will necessarily have a coastal-related impact. We do have to look at the fact that the building is located in a sensitive biological resource area, and so we'll have to consider, and it's mostly project construction, because we're not changing the footprint necessarily of the potential impacts of the project.
Thank you.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to start out by thanking the owner of East Beach Grill for donating, I think, to our junior lifeguard program. I'm the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I was there one day, and there was a lot of young people here, and so thank you so much, you know, for your generosity. Another time, I'd like to know more about what soft solutions there are to sea level rise, and I remember when we looked at the Climate Change Action Plan two years ago, there was just, it was this thick, and I know we're gonna revisit it, so I think it is important that we come back with so many of our facilities on the shore. Obviously, we should stay on top of that. And then also, I'll just throw in that I've just been to some fabulous weddings at this facility, and I know that's part of the business plan, but it's a place where good things happen, so I'm happy to hear that we're moving on, on fixing it up to its glorious self. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
It appears this, though, space for staff is reduced in this new plan. Is that the case? And what will, where will those folks then go?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, you're correct. We are not proposing any staff offices on the pavilion floor. However, a space for a monitor, because if there's an event there, we do need someone on staff to be able to monitor the event, so sort of a temporary, you know, makes, well, kind of like if you think of a hotel lobby or a concierge desk, that kind of idea. Downstairs, we're proposing two staff offices, and if you see the site plan, that's what I showed in purple. And then this reception area is practically the size of those other two staff offices. So our idea is that we're really concentrating the staff resources where we anticipate most of the people will be using the facility on a regular basis. It's our hope and intent that, once renovated, this facility is open for more days a week and longer hours of the day, and that the purpose of the staff there will be to serve the public that come in and use the facility, and then the staff that are there seasonally for our summer programs. And that's why we've dedicated this area back here, to make sure there's somewhere for both storage, and then this multipurpose room would have the potential to be used for summer programming, for summer events. Our goal is to be as flexible as possible with the space and to maintain as much public, potential public use areas while still maintaining our programs.
And then you mentioned that the restaurant space is essentially the same, but it looks reconfigured as well, that there's a change between outdoor seating and indoor seating? Is that the way I'm seeing that accurately?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hart, currently, most of the kitchen area and facilities are here, and the indoor dining area is back in this location. This would reconfigure that so that if one was eating inside on an inclement day, you could look out to the ocean. So it would enhance the interior dining space and actually potentially double the number of seats that currently exist on the interior. The outdoor seating, we're still proposing that there would be some outdoor seating on the portico. And as I mentioned earlier, the portico itself would be slightly wider. This area is shown as a, as a separate tenant space. You know, how ultimately it's configured for serving a client for a restaurant would depend on the restaurant concessionaire, how they decided to do that. But this could also be a separate tenant space for any number of things. Could be a snack bar, could be a coffee shop, could be a variety of options. One of the reasons why people enjoy going to East Beach is partly because there is a place to have something to eat there as well, and so we realize that that's an important function of the building.
So there are more, there is more indoor restaurant seating, but there's less outdoor seating?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I don't actually have the amount of outdoor seating that there would be, but outdoor seating numbers change based on occupancy, but based on our, on our current estimate, I think it's about the same. The portico itself would be wider. Right now, it's not, right now, the dining extends into the public walkway, and so that would change that orientation.
That's what I was thinking, is that there's a lot of seats that are down there on the, on the walkway itself.
So it would move everything up onto.
Put those up onto the portico.
Correct.
And then keeping the walkway open.
We would need to maintain this 16-foot-wide access and part-for-fire access as well.
Was there any consideration or even a conversation with the coastal commission about extending that walkway to make it even more closer toward the ocean?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we've intentionally stayed within the original footprint, rather than extending any developed space onto the beach area. In fact, our proposed site plan pulls some of that concrete that's currently on the beach back and tries to contain it more. From the, I think it was the early 80s that those improvements were made.
It'd certainly be worth at least asking the question of the coastal commission. I mean, I assume the answer, but it'd be good to know that definitively, because there is an interesting trade-off with the covered portico space versus just being outside in the fresh air and everything, and there's different, folks like different things. Many people use that patio space outdoors and enjoy that a lot, and it's great to have the indoor space as well for when the weather isn't as good, but if there is any way to get some flexibility about that, not have to pick one or the other, this is the time to decide that. So I'd like to see that question asked.
And so I'm understanding too, the walkway area, right now, there's an area, like a concrete little, not fence, but you can sit on it, and now you're just having it, the picture look like it, that's no longer there anymore. Is that?
Actually, Madam Mayor, this dark line here shows that this is where there would still be a low-seat wall.
Okay.
It actually performs a really great function for people to sit, to set their stuff, they go for a swim, or they.
But your, but your illustration didn't have that.
That's only because the focus of this is on the interior.
No, no. Slide 15.
It does sort of, it might be difficult to see.
Oh, that looked flat to me. Okay.
Yeah.
Never mind. Okay. Well, it's exciting to see, I mean, this is, and it'll be, how great it would be if we could aim for it to be completed by its 90th birthday in 2016. That would be a nice, a nice birthday present to the community, and who knows if that can happen, but, you know, maybe, right? You got year, and you got, like, in any time in 2016, you got the whole year to make it work. How's that? I'll put that out there as a challenge, maybe. Okay. You know, why not? Mr. Hart?
Just, could you help with the fundraising goals and perspective in that regard? Is there anything the department has experienced that's kind of comparable to, you know, give us a sense that raising $3 million is doable? I understand the library, that makes, it's probably the best example. Is there any other Parks and Recreation building fundraising that's been on this scale, attempted and successful?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I don't know the answer to that, with the exception that if we reach back in time to the 20s and 30s and 40s and 50s, yes. You know, the history of philanthropy in Santa Barbara has made the community as wonderful as it is today. We are working on developing our plan. Clearly, the library provides us with a great opportunity. Also, we'll be looking at essentially other larger sources of funds, maybe not at the local level, to restore a historic building, to meet a community recreation need. We'll be looking at a variety of options to raise funds for the project.
Grant funds is what you're talking about? Okay.
Ms. Rapp?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hart, we actually have spent a bit of time talking about the challenge of fundraising for probably a minimum of three and more likely, a little bit more, but we don't really have a good sense of that yet. We have learned lessons from the library and their fundraising efforts to raise over $5 million for the children's library. So clearly, it is not something that staff have expertise in, and we would need to include in our development plan the cost to hire a professional and work with us to do it. It also takes a substantial amount of time to do the fundraising campaign. At one time, the Park Foundation, when we thought that we were gonna get the National Guard Armory, there was some pretty concrete plans for how to move forward once that was going to happen with a major capital campaign. So I think we understand what's needed to make it happen, but we'll be needing to rely on experts to help us through that project. We also believe that there are very strong supporters of how this building serves the community, in the community of Santa Barbara, that will want to be part of that. So this is a very well-loved building, and so I think when we get all the pieces in place, we can make that happen, but it will be a fairly large undertaking.
Good, well, thank you for your confidence in that.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one comment on the, on the food service. What we've seen at two facilities in town is transformations that have really been helped, I mean, strong, and obviously have gone to the bottom line of all concern, and that's that the, when the Brown Pelican became the boathouse and the Waterfront Grill installed their, their glass, wonderful glass facility there. And I don't know what kind of protection, how, whether any kind of protection could be considered in that portico area, but just throwing that out there, both of those facilities clearly have bumped their revenues in a substantial way, and I don't mean just the money, but the, the use of it, the number of days, and the number of folks that are able to enjoy the facility and all that, so just, I expect that's being looked at, but it came to my mind as I was looking at the drawing here.
Okay, we do need a motion to move this forward. Is there a motion?
I will.
Okay.
I move recommendation B and C to authorize the execution of these contracts, one related to archaeological investigation, the other two biological resources, so the project can move forward.
Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number nine.
Contract for construction of the Bath Street Pocket Park.
Is this still yours, Ms. Zachary? Okay.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I just have a very brief presentation for this project. We've talked about this park, the potential for this park for many years, and we're before you today to ask that you authorize the contract for construction of the park. So the purpose of the project is to provide a small neighborhood park in the west downtown, enhance the neighborhood, provide safe recreation, and achieve sustainable park design. The property was purchased as part of the Mission, Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project and was put on hiatus for a period of time. However, now we've moved forward with your approval of the funding, December of last year, we've been working on the design and the approvals for the project. The site, as many of us remember, is at Bath and Ortega. It's a small site. It's actually about 2,500 square feet in total, and when you look at setbacks, whether it's the creek or the front yard, you're left with a very small developable area. So we had a lot of constraints to work with. One, to try to find a way to provide a safe recreation opportunity that met the needs of young families, yet also take into consideration compatibility with the neighborhood and consideration of Mission Creek. So, starting in January of this year, staff worked on some conceptual designs. We then conducted a neighborhood meeting in March and presented three different designs to the neighbors, and ultimately came away from that meeting with a recommendation that we go to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a proposal for a park with a small playground in it for two-to-five or five-to-12-year-old children. We took that to the commission in March, and they concurred with the recommendation. It's always been intended, as we remember, for children and families, and how, you know, so what we looked very carefully at, well, if there was a playground there, how we would squeeze one in, so to speak. We did look at some other concepts, but the neighbors and the feedback that we got resoundingly is we want families and people to be here. We don't want it to be a place that becomes unsafe or a place for people to hang out. We've been through design review. We were at the Architectural Board of Review for concept, and then final in September. We also went to Visual Arts and Public Places Subcommittee, because we're proposing an art component, tile art in the sidewalk. And then the project went to the Parks and Recreation Commission for approval in August. So to give you a sense of the design, and this is, this is a little difficult to read, but here's Ortega Street, and here's Bath Street. We're proposing that the entrance of the park, or at least the park will have an entrance on Ortega Street in this location. There will be a small permeable paving entryway patio that then leads to a small playground. The playground's designed for two-to-five-year-olds, and we have simple benches, a couple of trash cans, a park light, which will work in conjunction with, there's a city streetlight right here, and then there's a new streetlight being proposed to be installed right here. This area that you see in red is actually the area that'll serve as the infiltration trench to take all of the site runoff from the playground. The playground will have a surface of the pour-in-place rubber, in part because from a maintenance standpoint, it's more realistic, from a cleanliness standpoint, it's more realistic, and also from an accessibility standpoint. This area right here of the playground is the accessible location. So our goal with every playground we install is to provide some sort of accessibility area. The, the project includes redoing all of the site fencing to the right wrought iron standard that you see, for example, in Parque de los Niños. So it'd be 42 inches high at the street, and then it would go up to six feet along the property line. There's a private home right here, and then six feet along the creek setback line. The tile art that we're proposing would be actually in the sidewalk at the entrance, and it would say Bath Street Pocket Park, similar to what we have on West Cabrillo Boulevard, what we have in our other parks, same concept, to do tile art. Because we had such a small space to work with, we wanted to have everything be as much sort of flat work and incorporated into the park, rather than creating more stuff that either needed to be maintained or took the park out of potential use for the public. The landscaping is very simple. We're proposing four trees. These are native cherry trees. This would be an oak tree. The remaining landscaping is sea anothis, coffee berry, drought-tolerant, appropriate species to be adjacent to Mission Creek. There is obviously no turf proposed for the project, so any open space that you see would be mulch. The area around the playground is sort of the concrete header that we put in. This gives you a sense of the, the park element, so the playground design is intended to be sort of woodsy, to fit in with the Mission Creek theme, and then also on a small enough scale to fit in with the neighborhood, because it's a dense. it's a densely packed residential neighborhood, and we didn't want any of the height of the playground to affect that. Coffee berry, the idea behind the bench is that it's sandstone, again, in consideration of the creek, and some examples of the landscaping. Project funding, we have $250,000 to complete the project, and essentially it should work perfectly with the cost to build the project. The construction contract's $158,000. Project management and permits, which is being done by the Parks and Recreation Department and through the City Community Development Department. And then other materials and supplies, like the playground, light pole, tile art, which essentially will bring us to $250,000 for the project. I would just briefly add that this has been something the neighborhood keeps reminding us they've been waiting for, for 15 years, 16 years, I guess, by the time we're done, actually. And it's been a fun project for our department because we've done all the design in-house and worked with Parks, Project Management, Creeks Division, and our Parks and Recreation Commission. So with your approval, authorization of the contract today, we'll actually initiate construction this week, and we would like to have it done before the city closes for the holidays and have a ribbon cutting in January.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got one of these little guys living with me now, so I know what some of the concerns are. You mentioned a plant with berries on it. Are those edible berries?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, yes, they are edible.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I attended the public workshop on-site some months ago, and I can speak to what Ms. Zachary was mentioning about the interest from the neighbors. They're very excited about it. They were very engaged at the meeting, lots of different ideas, and I think your plan captures that very, very well. One thing I noticed in the staff report was there was some discussion about potentially not installing all the landscaping, just planting the trees, and I think that's something we should talk about. We've sort of been involving our conversation about that, I think, in terms of the drought. And I personally think it's very important to have this park done and with all the landscaping installed. And I think it's important that we start getting that message, find better tuned to what we're communicating to the public. I think that, you know, we have a plan to address the drought. It's been in place for many years. We're executing it. It requires, you know, 20% reduction in water use from residences and city facilities as well. I don't think it helps us to do more than that in terms of, and postponing the installation of landscaping for a park. I think that that gets into this strange symbolism discussion where it isn't really consequential, but we're saying, you know, we're not doing something because we just shouldn't be doing it. And I think, to me, this really highlights that, like the discussion I think we had a little bit about the street trees, the stone pines. You know, I think that we've got to protect these assets. We need to make this park look good from the day that it's first installed for the neighborhood that's been waiting for it for 15 years because the amount of water we're talking about in regards to the additional landscaping is infinitesimally small and is inconsequential to what we're doing in executing our drought plan. So that's my personal view. I noticed that in the staff report, and I just wanted to make sure that I said that today.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I neglected to mention that in my presentation. I skipped right over it, not intentionally. We've been struggling with that issue, with the fact that we are in a drought. Our department's on record of saying planting no new trees. We have, in pretty much all of our public discussions, prioritized the planting of trees, if nothing else, because of the time it takes for trees to become established. I went back through the construction bid specifications and sort of verified. We've minimized the number of plantings that we have here. We have 81 plants that we're proposing and four trees. You know, it wouldn't take a lot of water, but we are also sensitive to the fact that everybody's being asked to reduce water, and so are sort of torn between which way to go, with the exception that we would highly recommend that at least the trees are planted when the project moves forward.
Well, I think that's the key phrase, is that everybody's being asked to conserve water, but we're not asking everybody to stop watering and stop installing landscaping. We're asking people to net save 20% water. So I think from my perspective, and I'd love to hear what my other colleagues think, you know, obviously saving more water's better, and we talked about that as well, but there's a point where, you know, I think we need to be real precise and say, this is what we're trying to achieve, and this is what we're doing, and this is a plan, and we're executing that plan, and it's very thoughtful, and, you know, taking extra steps that result in a half-finished product, project, to me, don't, that doesn't fit that message. That's not consistent. That's confusing to people, I think. That's just my personal view.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, just to pick up on that, I sort of come down in the place of, I certainly support the trees going in, it's the long-term investment side, but I think we've been, as we've been talking about new development, for example, we've been talking about saying, okay, we're going to let new development go forward, but they stall on putting in the landscaping as a way to minimize the short-term impact. So I think there's a triage way to go here, which I think is what Ms. Zachary might be even talking about, the struggle where the big things that are long-lived get started with their lives there and start getting bigger, whereas some of the smaller plants could be stalled at least until we, let's say, we get resolved on whether we have a D-S-A-L. I mean, we don't even know that whether this D-S-A-L plant, for example, in the case of, in the event of a drought, we get into litigation, does that get stalled, et cetera? So I'm coming down somewhere in the middle, Mr. Hart, of saying, yes, the big trees should go in, but conceivably the ground cover could be, probably there are ways to put in some chips or something for a little while, and then hopefully it either rains or we come to the next step of development in our water supply and then move forward. Another area that I want to speak about, as we've had two totally cool projects coming before us today, and the good news is there are several more totally cool projects which the Parks and Rec is charged with getting going in this one year. And it's the proverbial pig and the python. It's a lot of new stuff, and we all want to see it all going forward. And I want to make sure that the Parks and Rec has the infrastructure, the staffing, to handle this bulge of work. I know that Mr. Van Mullen is on board now, and I'm delighted with that decision to hire and the score that we have as a city to have gotten him on board. But I want to make sure that we have the folks to have this going while we're struggling with the trees and while we are struggling with getting, ramping back up with our recreation programs, et cetera. So could you speak to that? We have the design of the turf as one project that I'm very interested in, and the ball field down on Cabrillo Boulevard is another one, and I'm missing probably some others that are substantial projects that we all want to see happen yesterday.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, very briefly, we are moving forward with all of those, and one of our first steps is sort of feasibility concept before we're ready to roll out and have public discussion. We anticipate, for example, the ball field will be going back to the Parks and Recreation Commission at the beginning of the year. We have new commissioners coming on board, so we're kind of waiting a little bit for that as well. There is a lot of community interest in moving that forward. Similarly, with other playgrounds and playground design work that we're doing, getting to the point where we can start design review on those. I did mention that the new East Beach playground is going to be installed in the next 30 days, so that you'll see happening. And we have other projects that are in the pipeline. I would add that getting the Cabrillo Pavilion and Bath House project to where it is today was a fairly monumental work effort, and then designing and constructing an entire park in one year. But we do have a very defined schedule for moving things forward. As far as resources are concerned, that's something that we'll probably be looking at in the future as we look at everything we need to get everything done. The department certainly very much wants to get them all done too, because they enhance our Parks and Recreation facilities.
Well, Madam Mayor, just to finish up on that, I'm supportive of just making sure that we have the staffing that we need, perhaps some of it's going to be, could even be temporary, to get these new projects, just make sure they're staying on track and getting up and running. So that's just one of those places where I think investing in people is, it's okay to do because we can get these projects done timely and conceivably save money on, as the price of these things inevitably goes up, we can get them done sooner than later.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll jump in about Councilmember Hart's suggestion, and I'm falling into the opinion that to go along with what staff was recommending was the trees to start with and then add the landscaping as our water situation became more stable. And I guess the only thing I would worry about is if we have parks in some of the wealthier neighborhoods that are getting watered, and then this is a working-class neighborhood, and, you know, are we just shortchanging it because no one's going to complain? So I guess I can do my job and keep an eye on stuff and find out if there's some kind of inequity there in how the different parks are being cared for, but I do trust staff. If it looks barren and if people are complaining and we have the water that, you know, to go ahead and add. Those were beautiful with the little berries and the other stuff that you're planting. It should look good. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Although the numbers aren't big, it just struck me, is, since we're right next to a creek and you're doing some permeable pavers, as well as a small swale, as I understand it, are you able to leverage any creek funding to participate in this? Or is that, I know Mr. Benson's not here to defend himself, but...
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, in part because we want to, but also in part because we're required to, we're retaining all of the stormwater on-site, so part of it's to meet our city's stormwater regulatory requirements. It's a nice-to-have and a must-have. We haven't pursued that with the Creeks Division because it's something that we'd be required to do anyway.
Right. Got it. And then in terms of the little debate here about the landscaping, I do agree with Mr. Hart, is that if we're going to do this and get this launched for these kids and get it going sooner than later in this ambitious schedule, I would fall on that side of that argument.
Mr. Hart.
Well, and I totally understand now why staff is struggling with this because council's struggling with it and the community's struggling with it. But, you know, I think it's important to point out that the call was not to replace the stone pines on Athamoo Street during the drought, but we're planting the trees in this location. So this is part of the struggle that I see that you're doing, and I think that we need to decide up here what we're going to do to get you to be able to make a clear choice about these kinds of things, because it doesn't actually make any sense to not plant the stone pines and plant these trees. It's the same number of trees. So I, again, think that it's very important that we start figuring out the difference between symbolism and reality, and the amount of water that we're talking about with these trees is completely inconsequential to the water supply of the city of Santa Barbara. It is truly only a symbolic issue, and I think that we're on much stronger ground communicating to the public about facts in this water shortage than in trying to do symbolism. And so that, I think we need to come to terms with that up here, and there's many, many decisions going forward that are like this, that should be based on technical, factual, real numbers rather than on what we're worried about is being communicated to the public, because I think the public can understand and appreciate facts, and I think that's what they're looking for from us.
Okay. We do need a motion to move this item forward because we do want a pocket park, whether or not we put all the plants in it today or not, but, Mr. White?
Yeah, I would move the staff recommendation.
Okay. So that's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I think, yeah, good. We'll look forward to January. Let's move on to item number 10.
Citywide performance highlights for fiscal year 2014 and comparative indicators report for fiscal year 2015.
Okay, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Headman, or Kate, sorry. I'm thinking Mindy, it's Kate. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon. My name is Nina Johnson, Assistant to the City Administrator, and I'm going to kick off our presentation of citywide performance highlights and our comparative indicators report. We started our program, I guess we'll... [inaudible] So we started our performance management program in 2002, basically as, it was a workload planning tool. The foundation of our program is really the development of an annual set of performance objectives and performance measures for 130 program areas throughout all city departments. Our presentation today is going to be covering our performance highlights in different departments. What you have in your council agenda packet is really highlights of all of the achievements, and then the presentation today is highlights of the highlights, just to give you examples of some of the types of things that departments have achieved. And then also, we're going to cover management indicators and our comparative indicators report. We've been doing the comparative indicators report for about eight years now, looking at the bigger picture, higher-level information, and how we compare to similar cities to Santa Barbara. Performance management, taking a look at what we call in our city, you often hear it referred to as our P3 program. When we first started everything, employees named the program our performance, our Paradise Performance Program. So that's why, that's where the P3 comes from. It was implemented to plan, help us plan and prioritize our work. Basically, everyone develops a set of performance objectives. Those are incorporated in our annual budget that's adopted by council. Department staff prepare status reports to monitor the performance on a biannual basis, sometimes more frequently, and then they're also tied to our management performance contracts. And overall, we really feel that the performance management program helps us identify areas for improvement, helps us monitor the performance, and communicate program results. This next slide is a quick snapshot of what a typical year looks like for our staff. In a couple months, we have 130 program owners in different departments that are going to develop a plan of performance objectives and performance measures. And I think in looking at other programs, similar programs in different cities, this is probably a very unique feature in that in a lot of other cities, departments have the larger responsibility. In our program, program owners, the lead staff person responsible for the program, supervising staff, they're the ones who come up with a plan of performance objectives, working with their manager and their department head, and they're responsible for collecting and analyzing the data throughout the year. So they, from the beginning, have had the responsibility of putting together their annual plan and having that accountability as they go through the year. So I mentioned already, it's incorporated in the annual budget, council adopts it, and then they're reviewed as part of our management contracts, and here we are today going over an annual report. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Administrative Analyst Kate Wong. She coordinates the program with all of the departments, and she's going to present the highlights.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, I'd like to go over the performance results for the different programs first, and what you see here is a chart that shows the quantitative results of the program performance objectives. You can get a sense of the total number at the bottom right-hand side. You can see that, you know, it was an ambitious 878 objectives that the programs took on this last year. They achieved 84% of those. But as you probably know, the value of the program is not necessarily in the quantitative results. It is in how these results are reviewed each year, looking at what worked, what didn't, looking at the next year. The value is in the parameters themselves that the program owners choose. So we are going to highlight today some categories for you to take a look at. As Ms. Johnson said, it's the highlights of the highlights, but want to give you a feel for the kinds of program objectives that the program owners set for themselves and the departments set for themselves. Many departments choose to go after grants and contributions. They look at effectiveness and efficiency in their programs, excellence in customer service, infrastructure improvements and maintenance, new initiatives, policies and enhancements, and regulatory compliance. Taking a look at contributions and grants, these are a few select ones. I think altogether for fiscal year 14, it's about $24 million in grants, and there are additional donations on top of that. So we had, you know, several donations outside of the grants and then the grants themselves. Effectiveness and efficiency are two areas that the programs take a look at. Obviously, in public safety, that's very important. Those are very important to the objectives of getting there on scene and ready to respond. So we have success from the fire department, police department, and harbor patrol emergency responders, first responders... responders, first responders, getting to the emergencies on time and well within their goals, well within their objectives. Another area that is perhaps lesser-known is that these program objectives can be used to target effectiveness or target efficiency. A good example of this is in the wastewater treatment area. For four years in a row, a program targeted trying to increase the number of proactive work orders, meaning that they're not always chasing after emergency work orders. So they targeted a high level each year, trying to get better and better at it. And after year four, they were able to see that they did indeed switch it around so they could be more proactive rather than reactive. So that's an example of an objective type, that it helps them achieve their objective by measuring it. In community development, 96% by focusing on the turnaround time, getting the zoning information reports out, this is an area that has shown a lot of improvement because they've been focusing on that. So bringing focus to effectiveness and efficiency is, you can measure to see how well you're doing. Excellence in customer service, I think we all experienced the city clerk's office success at administering last year's general municipal election, and that was an extra effort by that department, and it went really smoothly. The library staff increased their youth services, service to youth services by 29%. Water conservation did an unprecedented number of water checkups. So these are successes in the excellence in customer service. As you have already heard from Public Works, you've heard about the capital improvement program and what's been going on there, but just to highlight the fact that many departments will choose major milestones out of the capital improvements to put into their performance measures because there is, each department has a role and a responsibility to deliver those milestones to make sure that the dependencies are met. There may be, you know, the airport may be waiting on Public Works to do something, or, you know, fleet maintenance may be waiting on another department. So there's a lot of coordination needed, and therefore using milestones from these major capital improvement programs really helps to target in and bring focus to what's really necessary. Other infrastructure improvements are, as you have also heard, the, we've installed this last year, the 101 new bicycle parking spaces. There have been many renovations at existing parks, as well as others that are not mentioned here, not pictured here. Many waterfront improvements and other departments as well. In terms of new initiatives and policies and program enhancements, oftentimes, these are recorded as project objectives, special project objectives for that year. And a special project objective for Energy Management Program was to take part in the SCE-sponsored direct install program. This resulted just last year in an estimated 30,000 annual energy savings. This is additional to other energy savings that we have achieved on our own. This is a special SCE-sponsored and paid-for program. Trash and Recycling established a new revenue-sharing agreement with Marburg, and that's another example of an initiative or a program objective that was put into a project objective and achieved this last fiscal year. And lastly, for a category, the regulatory compliance, as other businesses out there in the world, the city of Santa Barbara also has to make sure that all of our projects and operations adhere to all of the federal and state and local regulations. These are just a few examples of the bigger categories of regulations, the Federal Aviation Administration, the wastewater discharge limits, stormwater management, air emissions reporting, fuel safety inspections, and as you know, the list goes on. But it is something that it's important to pay attention, and the projects and/or program objectives and goals are put on their list to make sure they get achieved. Performance objectives that are not met, I've had the opportunity to go through all the results, you know, every year of the program objectives, and so I get to see a pattern. And what I have seen is that, first of all, looking at the objectives that are not met is very valuable. You can look at lessons learned, you can look at what to target next year, you can solve problems, you can find problems that exist that, you know, perhaps weren't, you weren't able to see. So I saw a pattern of these four categories emerge, that if there were objectives not met, often they were because of either staffing issues due to workload increases or illnesses or injuries, technical changes, rollout of new technology, rollout of new software, rollout of, for example, our new financial management system. This impacts the daily routines of other programs. Dependencies, as I mentioned, on other projects. Sometimes if one project gets delayed, it can have a domino effect on other projects that are planned. And then priority shifts. The drought brought us some, a good example of where we needed to shift priorities. Grant funding that is either unexpectedly received or not received can also change priorities. So these were the main reasons that I saw in the performance, in the objectives not met. And I think that, again, I think they're as valuable as looking at what was met in order to understand how to move forward with the following year. So let me stop there for a moment, and, I'm sorry, I thought I saw a hand up over there with a question. Okay, we're good? All right, let me move on. All right. For management indicators, this is another form of taking a look at the health of the programs and of the departments. The department heads and the managers all get a chance. Every month, they receive information that gives them another way of just monitoring how well their programs are doing and how well their employees are doing. They look at use of sick time, they look at lost hours due to injury, and preventable vehicle collisions on a regular basis. Use of sick time, taking a look at it over the last few years, you can see that it's relatively stable, though as time has gone by, we used to have more employees, now we have fewer, so actual averages are going, trending down. The total number of injuries are likewise trending down. Total number of injuries per year, as you can see, the totals are at the bottom. These are all ones reported by risk management. And these are the total hours lost due to injury by fiscal year. And this is an important indicator in that if you do the math and you figure out, okay, how many hours is that, how many people is that? It's about, you know, 10 to 11 people's worth of time every year who are out due to injury or, to hours lost due to injury. And I know that the Risk Management Office works very hard to get employees back onboard in a modified capacity when that's appropriate, and that helps in productivity. Vehicle collisions are, vehicle incidents and accidents are taken a look at every month and every year to pinpoint any excessive problems that we may have. This, again, has a downward trend. There is, with attention brought to it, it is brought up to the department head level and the manager level and can be addressed right away. So that is the end of the performance part of this report, and I wanted to just mention that this is the performance of departments and programs. It is also important to take a look at as bigger pictures, how are we doing as a city?
And before you go there, do you have a sense, well, a vehicle incident, I mean, a big crash is an incident, but so is a little fender bender. So, I mean, it's the full range, can you define incident?
It is the full range, and it varies from year to year. I would say the average collectibles, you know, range between, you know, from 600 per incident to even up to 8,000 per incident if it's a very large...
You mean dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight thousand dollars.
And do we know, in terms of last year, for example, what the majority, I mean, what type of incidents we're talking about? The severity is important.
They were not, they were of lesser severity last year. I believe that of the total incidents, that there were only seven incidents that were, let's see, let me go back there. There were only seven that were, I think, had collectibles, and the rest were minor.
Okay. And then go back one more, I think.
Mm-hmm.
That one. So we, and I remember this, it helped during the recession, actually, because we had savings in our workers' comp premiums and so forth. But in the last few years, we're sort of doing a little zigzag. Do you have a sense of why the number of lost hours due to injury is fluctuating?
It really depends on the severity of the injuries. I've noticed that when, if there are severe injuries that keep people out and they're unable to come back on modified duty, particularly into jobs that require somebody to be completely, you know, 100% physically fit in terms of public safety, then I think the hours tend to increase for incidents like that. So it really depends each, from year to year, on what type of injuries happen.
Okay. So when it spiked up, that could be one or two people who just not been able to get back to work.
That's right.
Even at modified duty.
That's right.
Okay.
And given the fact that they need to get back to the kind of work that requires them to be 100% fit, and they can't come back to a modified duty.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Hart?
And is that, in this instance, those hours lost by injury, are those primarily public safety injuries? Is that really what...
No, I think it is a variety, and I do have, that information is posted. I could send a link, but all of this information will be posted on the public website after this presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to a different form of taking a look at the performance of the city as a whole, this is rather than performance, this is more of a comparative indicators study. And indicators differ from performance measures in the sense that an indicator really is more general. It is really tough to get apples-to-apples comparison when comparing so many factors because there are so many differences in the cities. We try to pick very similar cities. We look at population, we look at demographics, we look at size, we look at, you know, amount of expenditure. So the 12 cities that are showing here are very similar in those aspects, but there are some very distinct differences. Not every one of those has an airport, not everyone has a harbor. So again, just a caution, this is more of a, the purpose is to look at how we're doing as an indicator. So in general characteristics, you can see that in taking a look at all of these charts, if you look for Santa Barbara in the yellow, if it's left of the middle, you know, it's below the median, if it's right of the middle, it's going to be above the median. And the median is then recorded there as a line going across. So this is just general population, and we're just slightly below the median. Population density per square mile, and these are all, you know, factors that are generally taken from the state and/or the US Census, depending on the source, which are noted in your report. Population characteristics, this is sorted by the youth statistics, and you can see that one of the distinct characteristics that Santa Barbara has versus, say, Santa Maria is that we don't have that large gap between youth and seniors. We don't have the, perhaps, the number of families that other communities have that are to the right of that. You can see where there are smaller gaps and larger gaps, there's a little, you know, just a difference in demographics between the cities. Educational attainment, again, Santa Barbara is very close to the median. We're just below, at 45% of people who have a bachelor's degree or more. Median household income are just below the median here, and the median household income is, again, the midpoint. Percent household income greater than 25,000, or, excuse me, less than, less than 25,000, these are people closer to the poverty, how many, what percent of people closer to the poverty line or below, below 25,000. Poverty line is below that. But below 25,000, you see that Santa Barbara has 20% below that level, and that is right at the median in terms of between these, comparing these cities. Household income above 150,000, Santa Barbara is below median here, and taking a look to the right, you can see the richer retirement communities of Redondo Beach, Newport Beach, those are probably what you see reflected there. Owner-occupied housing, this is an anomaly where Santa Barbara is not toward the middle, and we're well below median here. That is, I think, no surprise considering the cost of housing here. The median is 52%, Santa Barbara is at 37%. Taking a look at the fiscal year 15 adopted budgets, we'll look at authorized positions, general fund expenses, and tax revenue. We try to compare general fund expenses so that we're not including the services that not every city has. So for fiscal year 2015, authorized positions per 1,000 population, this is total authorized positions, including all of the staff in all the enterprise areas as well, not just general fund staff. Projected fiscal year 2015 general fund revenue per capita. Now, the per capita figures are a little easier to compare, takes the population out of it, so we can really, it brings it to a little bit more comparable number. You can see that Santa Barbara is slightly above the median here. And this is in, I think that got cut off on the left, but you can see that these are the per capita numbers, 1,291, you know, per person. Projected sales tax per capita, the rates are, are the numbers below, and the actual per capita figures are above the bars. Santa Barbara's just above the median in this case. So in most of the revenue, I think we'll see that. In the assessed value of taxable property, the county assessors are the source of information here, and each county issues this every year in their tax rolls. So the median, we're just above the median in terms of, compared to these cities. Projected property and property tax per capita, this is an area where we are just below the median, but very close. Projected general fund transient occupancy tax per capita, well above the median. This, and you can see that the rates are there as well, the beachside communities that are real tourist destinations tend to pop up above the line as you can, as you can see which cities they are. Santa Cruz, Carlsbad, Santa Barbara, et cetera. And of course, Santa Monica. Business license tax per capita, this is where we're slightly above the median. This is, it's hard to see, actually, all the other cities with Santa Monica being so high. That kind of...
What is Santa Monica, what are they charging people that makes them such an outlier?
Their business tax structure, I believe, is different, and they have, they have several special business tax districts, and they also have many more businesses in a concentrated area. Their businesses, the number of businesses are a lot higher. So they are, in this group, definitely an anomaly. So they are, in this group, definitely an anomaly.
So it's more a quantity than it is a, it's both?
No, it's both. It's both. It's quantity and it's also, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, Santa Monica's always had a very high business license tax pre Prop 13. It was just one of their larger revenue sources, and so it's been maintained. And then also, if you can think of Santa Monica, they have a number of high-dense commercial corridors compared to us and other jurisdictions as well. It's the combination, though, by far.
But their structure, like you said, pre Prop 13 couldn't be replicated again today, or could it?
Madam Mayor, it could, but with the vote of the people.
Right. Good luck.
Same thing here with the utility users' tax, the UUT. This is, not every community has this, so there's fewer in this segment. But you can see that Santa Barbara is below the median in this case. And the higher, higher percentages rates are obviously ones that you will see well above the median. Moving on to public safety, there's a few indicators that, in public safety, that can give, that are pretty common to use just in comparing police and fire expenses and police and fire services. Again, I would caution that it's not always apples-to-apples compared with services. We can't get a precise comparison here. So this is just an indicator, and Santa Barbara's right in the middle here, is the percent of general fund expense. Authorized police officers per 1,000 residents, Santa Barbara's slightly above the median in this case. And looking at Part I crimes per 1,000 population, Part I crimes, of course, are the more serious crimes. And Santa Barbara is just above the median in this, in terms of the number of Part I crimes per 1,000 population in this group of cities. Looking at fire service, fire operating expenditure as a percent of general fund expense, the median's 19. We're at 20%. We're just above the median. Those are all very close. Authorized fire personnel per 1,000 residents, this is slightly higher than, Santa Barbara's slightly higher than the median. And Santa Barbara also, I did not take out the airport personnel. So we have an additional airport station, and that is included in this figure, as well as Berkeley and Newport and Santa Monica. Fire emergency responses, the number of fire emergency responses in this case is very similar across several cities. Just the ones in the middle all have around, you know, just over 200 per year. But that does not include, I mean, fire emergencies are emergencies where there really are specifically fires, not just going out on some report and then coming back. This is where there are fires actually happening. The medical emergencies are, of course, the more numerous, and the median being about 7900. And Santa Barbara is lower than the median with 5,000.
So, so these are raw numbers? They're not adjusted for population or?
That's correct. These are raw numbers. Our total number of emergency callouts for the fire department was over 8,000, about 8,500 for fiscal year 14. So these are, you know, most of which are medical emergencies, some of which are fire, and the rest are, you know, very hazardous conditions, false alarms, other kinds of calls as well, weather, et cetera.
Right. It'd be good to compare, like, some of these, it's, it's interesting if you contrast it with another one, like, for example, the median age.
Mm-hmm.
You know, which city and how that relates to medical responses.
Yes.
So, you know, it makes sense that Santa Maria and Santa Barbara are lower than the median because our number of younger people are higher than in Oceanside and Huntington Beach. You know, things like that to try to explain these.
Yes. No, it's very tempting to correlate, to see where the correlations lie.
Yeah.
In terms of general services, we looked at library and parks and some public works. Our library expenditures are right in, toward the median, along with Redondo and Sunnyvale and Carlsbad. The develop, and then moving on to parks, this is developed park acreage per 1,000. This is the one category where Santa Barbara is the highest. And that is not, does not include undeveloped park acreage. So we're just looking at developed park acreage per 1,000 population. But looking at the condition of our streets, our pavement condition street index is lower than the median considerably. And 64 in this chart would fall in the good category. 71 and above is very good, or 86 and above is excellent. Nobody has excellent, but there are several with 71 and above. And then the centerline miles of street maintained, this is another measure in Public Works as to how many miles of street are maintained each year. And ours is slightly below the median. And that ends our comparative indicators and performance report for fiscal year 14. And if you have, would like any clarifications or comments, I would be happy to answer. Or we'll have all the detailed reports posted online by tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you for that. That's a lot of information. It's going to take a while to absorb it and figure out really what it means. Sometimes those fig, or those graphs might be better illustrated if they showed, for instance, one city has a lot of something, but they have a much higher population. So I don't know how we do that. But it's really very interesting to see where we stand. It occurs to me when we're discussing Santa Monica, Mr. Hart and their high business rate, they are a very vertical city in a lot of parts. So, you know, where is one block, we may get X number of businesses. They're going to have 10X number of businesses. So not only are their tax rates considerably higher, but their density of businesses has also got to be greater. Thank you very much, Ms. One.
Thank you.
I don't see any speaker slips on this. And it's always good to see how it incorporates with the budget and so it, you know, how we're spending our money and how it relates to performance and measurements. It's, it's a good thing. So appreciate all the detailed work. That's a lot of work putting all that together. And I don't think we need a motion on this. It's just receiving the report. So thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on to council member committee assignment reports. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Kachuma Conservation Release Board met last week in a special meeting, and we decided to intervene in the lawsuit between Caltrout and the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. Reasoning behind that is the interests of the South Coast agencies who are receiving water from Lake Kachuma, though they overlap with the bureaus, do not necessarily directly coincide. And we wanted to make sure that we were at the table and finding out what was going on every step of the way.
Mr. Hart?
Last Friday, I attended the opening of the Wayfair Hostel at the base of State Street. It's an amazing facility. You should all take time to take a look through. It's nothing like I imagined it would be, or it's very impressive. The folks who put it together deserve a lot of credit for doing something really outside the box. And I think it's going to end up being a destination, you know, resort sort of place right across from the railroad station and everything.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended our Enzo meeting. It's, we're redoing our zoning ordinance, so it's the new zoning ordinance. And we had great participation by our planning commissioners. We got to meet the new consultants. And staff is really excited about it. They were doing a little dance. So I'm not sure when we're ever going to be on TV or anything, but I'll try to make reports on it. I attended Casa de la Rosa's Dia de los Muertos. That was a real success. The anti-bullying event went really well with our youth council. And then I also, for fun, attended the retirement party of Robin Hamlin. And was it 30 years? She was with Public Works, and it was a really nice party. And we congratulate her, 30 years. I'm always amazed. And I congratulate her, too. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Infrastructure Subcommittee met last Wednesday, and Ms. Johnson gave us a bit of sort of a summary of some of the feedback that is coming in on, on our, on the little slips that are going, that are being passed out at our infrastructure meetings. And one of the interesting pieces is that the police headquarters is, is at least appearing to come up at the top of the list of folks' sense of, of need out there. So that was, there will be more, more data and more, more summaries coming in. We have still a group more of meetings that will occur in the next couple of weeks. And, and then we'll be able to pull all that together, and staff will be delivering, I'm sure, a, a package of priorities that's coming out of those infrastructure meetings.
Great. Okay. Mr. Hart, did you have anything else? Nope? Okay. We do have a closed session. If you could read that.
Conference with city attorney, anticipated litigation, government code section 54956.9D2 and E3, significant exposure to litigation arising out of the tort claim of Universal North America and Jose Goffino.
Okay, thank you. And we will be adjourning from closed session. Thank you very much.